We're done, Brian.
That's good.
But the record show that no decision was made in closed session. Todd, we are up to the ATV ordinance.
I received information or just a request from Ms. Eden to review the new code sections or the changes in the code section that came out with the ending of the last session of the legislature. And in looking at the code section, the request was whether or not we have to appeal for change, modify the ATV ordinance. And in looking at that, the changes that were made by the legislature that were enacted and signed by the governor, I didn't see any changes that were necessary in our ordinance. It appears that the changes primarily deal with the highways that are under the state's control. It actually specifically has provisions in there regarding the ability of the Board of Supervisors to issue restrictions or rules associated with the secondary roads. The only thing that kind of caused me to pause and looking at it from the standpoint of the provisions for the operations of the all-terrain vehicles on the highways, they restricted, as we know, it's been in there since we enacted the ordinance, the provisions of sunrise to sunset for operation. They added that an all-terrain vehicle is a motor vehicle, so they went on to say operating those vehicles from sunset to sunrise, they have to have the requirements that a motor vehicle has for head lamps and tail lamps and that type of thing. So looking at it from the standpoint of our ordinance, you know, where we go before sunrise and after sunset for a period of hours, I don't believe that our ordinance is in conflict. So looking at it, as I mentioned in the email response to Ms. Eden, I said, you know, our ordinance can stand as long as it isn't the provisions of it don't conflict with the state law. And those provisions that are potentially in conflict would have to be susceptible to an argument that would be caused that in view of the conflict, if it would be capable of any reasonable explanation or reasonable interpretation that would make it not conflict, then we get that benefit. So I don't think that in looking at our ordinance, we would have to make any changes. But I wanted to be on the agenda because I know Doug's here. He was instrumental in the creation of the ordinance with ATVs and the secondary roads, since it's in his wheelhouse. The, yeah, I wanted to go through that or at least discuss things that may be questionable in looking at our ATV ordinance as compared to the new law. You know, we did conduct it. Can you find any doubt that you felt were conflicting?
Did you say anything about age, the age?
Yes, the age, that was another change that impacts the highways. If they're on the highways or primary highway, they have to be eighteen. It's still the same for other roadways that would be a valid driver's license.
So in my eyes, our ordinance takes care of all the county roads and their ordinance takes care of the state road?
Yeah, that is a probably oversimplified, but yeah, it's, you know, there's crossings and that type of thing. If you look at what you're referring to, a person operating an all-terrain vehicle on a highway shall have a valid driver's license and operate the vehicle at speeds of thirty-five miles per hour less, that's our ordinance today. In addition, a person operating an all-terrain vehicle on a highway pursuant to subsection one, paragraph B, through G shall be at least eighteen years of age and have financial liability coverage. We have the requirement of financial liability coverage in our ordinance. If you go to subsection one, B, much easier on a dual screen, so fair. The operation on the highway unless one or more of the following conditions apply: incidental vehicles used for purposes of surveys, all-terrain vehicles operated by employer agent of political subdivision, the all-terrain vehicles operated by employer agent of a public agency, the all-terrain vehicles operated for the purpose of mowing, installing, improvement, materials science, et cetera, et cetera. The all-terrain vehicles operating on county roadway according to 321-10 subsection two, the all-terrain vehicles crossing the highway pursuant to subsection 321-I point ten. So the paragraph F, which is the paragraph that applies a person operating an all-terrain vehicle on a highway pursuant to subsection one, paragraph B, through G, which the F would be, does require it to be eighteen years of age and have financial coverage in that.
The only question I had, some people said, okay, now we can go in county property.
No.
That hasn't changed.
No. No, that, that, we're still talking about the roadways.
Right. And our county parts.
I spoke earlier on that, as far as the sixteen and eighteen, that is a conflict. They, they have to be.
They're supposed to be eighteen years.
Any other questions?
So that will have to be changed.
Do we have to amend the ordinance for that?
Yep.
As far as the rest of it, I don't see any requirements that we need to modify or change.
So no seats in the back can still be?
No. The ordinance, whatever ordinance it is.
So we'll put it on the agenda and our ordinance and make it eighteen?
Yes.
Make a note of that? Thank you. Yep, you have to publish it. Any other questions on your ordinance?
Anything else? There, I was hearing here too. Anything else?
No, I was thinking that, I had seen an email from Lori Smith with the PNR. As far as, there was a question that came up in association with highway use and their DOT title that they can. So, I mean, that's not spoken to in our ordinance, but I'm going to double check on that one as well. That might be just for harm use type thing. But, you know, the highway exclusion, there is a box in our title that says if it's DOT titled, then that'll help them to go on. We don't get a lot of it at all, but I don't think we need to speak to it. But the age thing is one thing I noticed. Correct, and as far as I'm understanding, this supersedes the county ordinance in all ways, anyway. I mean, as far as the state law, under its control, okay. As we'll get questions as well.
Right.
You know, the age thing already was asked, well, my kid's sixteen, now we can't. True, so we spoke to that this morning.
Yeah, there's, you know, in provisions such as that, there is the where it would supersede, I mean, you know, we can't provide more or less restrictions than the state law if it's, if we're, you know, in a position where they have taken control of that.
Because I know Jones County kept their ordinance for that reason. There were some things they liked better than the state.
The record, Joe, that we discussed, the ATV ordinance. I think that's it on that.
Matt, when do you want, I apologize for interrupting you. When do you want to have that on the agenda for, I mean, two weeks?
Well, we can put it on next week, but then we have to, how long does it have to be in the newspaper?
We can put it on the agenda this, set a date for it.
Okay, so we can do that next week.
Yeah, we'll do that next week, but then we'll have to publish it in the newspaper twice, three times.
Can we, can we set a date today with the decision on the agenda? Or does that have to be specific to set a date for ending it?
Well, we'll set a date next.
Just put it on the agenda and set a date next week.
For publication.
Yep, and then we'll get it published and everything, we'll make the decision next week. Anything else on ATV, UTV? If not, national opioid settlement.
Yeah, I just wanted to discuss with you, the settlement has come through. It's, what I wanted to clear up with the board is, and I believe, did you receive the email? Okay. It's needing to have basically an authorized representative set that up. It'll be an account that's set up through the law firm in Iowa that is controlling it and that will be paid out annually. Brown-Brier is the administrator for the distribution of the settlement. And the, obviously, well, the authorized representative is going to be the person who receives all of the communication and then also set up the account and that type of thing to have those funds channeled through to get into the general, I guess, the general fund. So, and then those funds obviously are going to be restricted in use by the requirements of the settlement. Oversimplifying that, you know, has to be geared towards opioid reduction and control. So I just want to know how you want that as far as the authorized representative or authorized official, you want me to do it? Because there could be the point of contact and then other people can be assigned, you know, through that process by the authorized representative. Or do you want Tammy to be the authorized representative? I'm just wanting to know some feedback from you before I set this up, because we want to set it up. It's, it's, you know, going to be approximately, I had it down, I didn't write it down, it's nine thousand and so on. You saw the, the, and that'll go on, you know, for, I believe it's eighteen years. So, you know, it's going to be a lengthy period of time, but.
Think it would be appropriate, we had to do it at some point.
Okay, and I will, then I will fill out the information that they need and then once the account is set up and going through that process, I will, you know, make the additional appointment so that obviously there are going to be people kept in the loop there.
So the action that we would take today would just be appoint you to be the lead person on.
Yeah, the authorized official of Kusud County for the opioid settlement.
Do I have such a motion? Casey made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, but stacker, any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried unanimously. Anything else on that?
I have one more thing on the board agenda, I believe. Discussion, decision, approved resolution, Summit Carbon Agricultural Meditation Plan. It's going to be a discussion primarily. And whether or not we go from here depends, I'm like, Doug's here. I was given a copy of a resolution that was approved by the Pocahontas, the Pocahontas County Board of Supervisors dealing with the construction of pipeline, electric transmission line, communication line, underground service line or other similar installations over across or beneath county drainage districts and/or any private tile systems. The resolution is largely grounded in chapter four sixty-eight of the Iowa Code. As you know, that's the drainage code provisions, which requires, you know, easements to be gained prior to any crossing of drainage district type. Those easements are, as I mentioned, required by law. This resolution sets out the process that any company, individual, entity would have to go through in order to get that easement. So you're setting through this type of a resolution the requirements that each applicant has to go through before an easement would be granted, okay? The easement part is required by law, so they have to get an easement. But it's, it's wise, in my opinion, to set out requirements so that it is standardized so that all applicants would be treated the same, right? So, since this was sent to me, I presume you've all seen it. Okay? And short of looking at it from the standpoint of it being Pocahontas and looking at it from the standpoint of Kusud County, I first want to ask, I mean, is this something that the county would be interested in doing?
I talked to my people yesterday in my area and whole Dana's, be part of the Dana and Eric. And they're, they're happy with Pocahontas, but they want a different one. And right now it's in a court session and it's supposed to be settled this week. And if it gets settled, they want that one instead of all the laws that they have to follow to go through these people's ground.
Okay.
So if we could table it for a week or two.
We certainly can, but I don't want to table the discussion because I wanted to dig a little bit deeper, but that makes sense to me. So is the board interested in going to a process of much the same as what we did for the wind generators, right? You know, to have a standardized process that the applicants know what they have to go through in order to get an easement. The reason I was thankful that Doug's up here too, there's a lot of this resolution that deals with roadways and roadway crossings and the number of feet that, you know, they have to have in order to from roadway and so on and so forth. That's outside of my wheelhouse. Matter of fact, I'll be honest with you, when I read it, I just kind of glazed over. I don't know, but I, have you received a copy of this resolution?
I don't know if it's that particular one tied.
It's whatever was Pocahontas.
There was a resolution earlier from, it would be the Iowa Drainage District Association, which I think has, and whether that's the same one or not.
Probably.
But we do have Kusud County has procedures that applicants are supposed to follow in order to get, get that easement. I can certainly get you a copy of that also.
Well, and when. Right.
Those types of things.
And, and that's important, obviously. So when we get, if it's the board's decision to table this until after the resolution, after the Pocahontas resolution is resolved, I would also enjoy sitting down with you this, so we can go through the, I, maybe that's a poor use of the term, enjoy, but if you can go through this and see if there's any issues that come up.
And this is a false drainage district. So private tile would not be really addressed.
As far as the control of the county, that's correct.
Where's that other one from that you're talking about?
Some of this is, you know where it's at, Dana. I was talking to Matt Donner, but he was the one that was telling me about it. But he said that there, the people at the Sierra Club, their committee and another one, they had some lawyers and they were drawing it up, but I do not know where it's from. He just said that another county tried to push it through and it was, someone was going against him or something like that. So it's in court and if it passes that county, it'll pass every county and that's the one that they were, it's got.
It's not the Pocahontas.
It's the Pocahontas town. It's not the Pocahontas. Because he said the Pocahontas one is good, but this one's better.
Did you have a copy of our drainage district crossing?
I do not, because, I, I mean, obviously that's within the drainage realm, but.
Doug, in that one, do we have pipelines specified in there?
Well, anything crossing.
That four sixty-eight, one eighty-six that requires easements, which pipelines is a, utilities, different things like that. That's what wind generators have been getting their easements. But I can't remember exactly, exactly which.
Of course, you used the word utility and I don't think that's appropriate in this case. Because this isn't like, it's not, in my notch, hasn't been declared a utility, has it?
Well. I'm, I'm very confident that they have to get an easement. Whether, but it's not, it's not necessarily whether it's utility.
Okay.
It's anybody, you, you, the drainage district, it, it's a legal principle.
No, I just didn't want you to use the term utility. I understand the crossing, but I just didn't want you to have the term utility used in that crossing.
No, but I mean, it references that four sixty-eight, one eighty-six.
Yeah, it's anything that crosses.
Right.
But I mean, he just used, didn't reference utility. I just didn't want you to reference it as utility.
Yeah, and there's no reference to, to utility in the chapter four sixty-eight in that regard. It's, it's dealing with construction of a pipeline, electric transmission line, communication line, underground service line or other similar installations over across beneath any drainage tower infrastructures. So the, the, I mean, if we do wait, then I will try and find that, or if you can.
You got Matt's number?
Excuse me?
You got Matt Donner's?
I do.
He's the one that I was talking to.
And so I can, I can try and get that resolution if it's successful and challenge and we can go from there. The concept, I think, is, is very wise. That way you're standardizing, as I mentioned, the application process. But then I want to get with Doug so to make sure there's no conflict with road right-of-way easements.
And I may have missed an inch, but I looked at it here yesterday. It does talk about a fee for crossings, hours specifically. Talks about a dollar amount of two thousand dollars currently, but I didn't see a dollar amount in here. It just said for the cost of the engineering and stuff for inspection, so.
I think the one that they want is there's, county will get paid every crossing that they go through. I do remember that same part of that.
That's the way our ordinance is right now.
It talks about it in here, but I don't think it has a dollar amount, that was my only point.
What's the feeling of the board, you want to table this until you get information, Mr. Casey?
I do.
I would just put it, yeah, put it back in the agenda in a couple of weeks.
So as far as decision, it would be, for the record, it was to be recorded that we discussed it and that we would make a decision at a later date when we had more information. That'd be all right?
That would be great.
That's what the record will show.
Next week, there's people missing, it'll be next week.
Why don't you put it on for two weeks from now? And if we don't have the information, we'll delete it and put it on a different.
That would.
Okay. Yeah. Anything else that would, Todd, that you'd like to talk about today? We kind of, you, you're really well so far. Are you gonna, Todd, are you gonna, we got another item for, but what about the safe streets, roads for all, SS four eight?
That's.
Okay, all right, just didn't know.
Todd, it's not on the agenda, but we did get served other stuff this morning, so.
Oh. Okay, just give me a.
He's, he's reviewed it or looked at it already. It's from Joe.
Okay, okay. All right.
Yep, thank you, Todd. We are up to discussion on the Summit Carbon Solutions project update. You guys want to come up and get a little closer so that the owl can hear you? He's, he's a hooter.
All good.
Great.
You may have already seen this, but.
Same thing to some, I'd say, assuming.
Probably, yes, because I sent them out yesterday. So one of them is just kind of informational about the states and then one of them is specific to Kusud County and the other one is actually a map.
All right, you're doing good.
All right, so I, really, the goal here today is just to talk to you guys a little bit about why Summit Carbon Solutions is pursuing this.
Introduce yourself and.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I am Haley Langrell and this is Doug Mergold. We work for Turnkey Logistics and we're here representing Summit Carbon Solutions.
Thank you.
And Doug, he is the primary contact for the non-environmental permitting that we're doing, so road crossing, stuff like that, so.
All right, we've been speaking with Doug there a number of times, trying to keep each other up to date on progress and as new information comes in. Because, you know, the, the project is not completely designed. This is a very complex project. So there are minor changes, as a matter of fact, I think.
So there are minor changes, as a matter of fact, I think, have we crossed three thousand changes now?
Yeah.
In a two thousand mile pipeline, we've already made three thousand changes to the pathway. Uh, and that's just trying to accommodate counties and private landowners and cities and townships. So that's that's what makes it pretty complex to get from here to actual construction.
So Jay, we're just going to talk about a few things with you guys and then you have a general project update and, you know, I'll try to make it quick because I know those questions. So you guys are pretty familiar with the project at this point, what we're doing. So Summit Carbon Solutions is created by Summit Ag, which is a large farming company based in Iowa. And, you know, we also know about the strong ties between the ethanol industry and the ag industry, especially in the Midwest. So here in Iowa, you can see on this little handout I give, I've given you guys, fifty-seven percent of corn grown in Iowa is sold to ethanol plants. So that's a pretty significant market for the corn producers. With this project, once it's completed, uh, the ethanol plants are going to be able to sell into growing markets that we do expect to continue to grow. So that will in turn help the corn producers sell their corn for a premium. Without this project, what we do expect to see is that ethanol plants begin to struggle due to the regulations coming down the line. This could cause a ripple effect, you know, across the community. And that's something that Summit Ag doesn't want to see as a farming company in Iowa. So really, the overarching goal of the project is to keep keep the ethanol plants up and running and keep corn producers selling their corn for a premium. So with that said, I'll kind of direct your attention to this top right-hand side of this up here. So I won't go over the Iowa specific numbers, we'll just talk about Kasoot County specifically. So we had these numbers run by a third party, Ernst &amp; Young. They are estimates based on the construction cost and operation of the pipeline. So the total, the estimated total investment into Kasoot County is around twenty-two million dollars. And the estimated total annual property taxes is around eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for the first year.
Yeah, another sheet where it said four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in property taxes.
Where was that?
Well, maybe that's an advocate, that's an advocate, sorry.
No, good, that's okay, it's easy to confuse, both the O two pipeline. Okay, so just general project update. We do expect construction to start in late summer of twenty twenty-three. Um, as far as easement acquisitions, we have about five miles acquired in the county. So that's around twenty-one percent of easements acquired. And then investors, uh, we have some of our ethanol plant partners that have invested, John Deere, Continental Resources, uh, those are just some of the larger ones. And then partners, we have thirty-two ethanol plants across five states. And for Summit Carbon Solutions, our five states are Iowa, Nebraska, Minnesota, North Dakota, South Dakota. And then permitting, kind of went over that with Doug already, uh, he's the primary contact there. And we are collecting information and requirements. We're hoping to submit actually a few permits here pretty soon, so. Uh, but that's all, if you guys have any questions, uh, we'd love to try and answer them.
Can the county bank on those figures, Jake? Can they add them into budget if they're absolutely going to get these dollars?
They're estimates, so, you know, we can't say that that's one hundred percent. You know, Ernst &amp; Young can't even say that, uh, they're estimates.
And I would just like everyone to be aware of that. Ernst &amp; Young audit employees shared answers to ethics portions of the CPA exam between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty-one. And hundreds more cheated on their continuing professional education courses required to maintain their CPA license. And so the SEC fined them a hundred million dollars just this year for cheating.
I will say Ernst &amp; Young is one of the big four accounting companies in the United States, so they're a highly, highly, uh, they have a very high reputation.
This is second time they were caught cheating, that's why they're providing a hundred million dollars.
That is not good, but, you know.
And are you going to provide liability insurance to landowners whose insurance companies are refusing to provide us land liability insurance because of that had to this pipeline?
So the liability falls completely on Summit Carbon Solutions.
Not by easement, it doesn't.
It has, have you? You can add what you want into the easement, but the liability does fall onto Summit Carbon Solutions.
Not by easement, it doesn't.
In most, in all of the easements, it is, that's a blank. In a blank easement, the liability would fall onto Summit Carbon Solutions because we are the owner of the pipeline. So if anything happens, that liability falls onto us unless you're out there purposely, like if you dig it up and take an axe to it or something, that's going to be on the landowner at that point or whoever caused that damage. But any unintentional damage, any leak, anything like that, the liability does fall back on Summit Carbon Solutions one hundred percent.
Thank you for all the road damage, fire and stuff.
That would be us. If there is road damage, that's another thing, I'm glad you asked that question. So Turnkey Logistics, the company that Doug and I worked for, um, we have actually a system that, you know how, um, like Google Street View where you can just drop the little man and kind of look at the street around you? So we are going out and filming all the roads before and after construction. So you will be able to see landowners, public, even if you're all landowner commissioner or supervisor, sorry. You will be able to drop the little man wherever you want to see the road and you'll be able to see a three sixty view of what it looked like before and after. So that's one way that Summit is trying to be very transparent. And if there are any damages there, we will be paying.
If it rains, are you going to pump water out of the transline onto the farmer's fields?
Um, I I don't, I'm not sure of the answer of that.
Outside our field of expertise.
That would be construction. But I can, I can get the answer for you on that.
Appreciate it, because that would be very detrimental.
I will say the county does have an ag inspector, so if it is raining and they want us to stop work, that is something that Summit would do. We're looking to the ag inspectors to tell us when to work, how to work in those conditions.
Are you going to be running twenty-four hours a day so the ag inspectors can watch you at night?
No, we will not be working twenty-four hours. There's regulations against that and we are, I mean, we're following regulations.
And we also have to abide by whatever kind of zoning restrictions there are. I have twelve counties that I'm that I'm approaching. And everybody has a little bit of a different idea on what they want. Some people are saying, no, the only restriction is going to be keep it daylight hours, a few minutes before sundown, a few minutes after sunrise. Other people say five days a week, I've heard no Sundays, I've heard no holidays. But that's what we're actually trying to do. Every time we communicate here, I write a report on it, we call it contact notes. And and what it's actually doing, uh, everything gets gets put into more or less master program. And it becomes a compendium of how we are going to act and behave and and, you know, within your community. So, um, and that's a large part of what I'm doing is trying to find out what are the rules and regulations and how are we going to abide by?
Yeah, just to add to that, we know the state has specific regulations, but we're also making a point to look directly to the county and ask what their specific regulations are.
Do you have a direct route for sure yet?
That's kind of goes back to the three thousand changes we've made so far. Again, not only looking to the county, but to the landowner. So if the landowner says, you know, I want to build a shop here and you're saying you're going to put your line there, we will do our best to move it and we have done that three thousand times. So that's why it's kind of, we don't have a line for you, yes, but we will. It's just, it takes time because we are trying to work with everyone individually.
We do have our approximate road crossings, which I've actually already submitted a basic plan to Doug and should be on file. But again, as long as we're trying to change to 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 better help counties and private landowners, we can't lock it down yet, but it's coming.
Feel like if Nancy would sign and you tell her you're going in this area, but then this guy doesn't want you here, so you got to go there. So she agreed to this spot, you put it over here, is that what you're going to do?
Well, for one, we have a construction corridor that we have to stay within, uh, which is what we've registered with the I U B. The changes, uh, one of my questions that I asked the engineers is how far are we allowed to change before we need to file a new permit? But we, like I said, we have to stay within the construction corridor and we're just trying to, uh, we're doing advance and trying to find the best route. Yeah.
A quarter mile.
The last people I talked to, I remember it was a lot shorter than that.
Are you sure it was Summit or?
Yeah, it was Summit, more than that.
It was a lot.
Okay, we'll double, I'll double check that.
So you can add twenty-seven percent already?
Twenty, yeah, around twenty-one percent as of last Thursday.
What's the percent for the state of Iowa?
Um, it's at around thirty-five, I believe, so we're a little bit.
You haven't decided to work with the other ones yet so that you didn't have so many pipelines crossing the state?
Not yet. It's kind of, I don't, I don't know how the two of them ended up happening at the same time.
Be on top of each other in one spot, you know?
Oh, I thought you meant, okay. Oh, no, we are not, we shouldn't be on top of each other. We know where each other's lines are going.
We're more or less running more to the south and they're running more to the west with a good distance between us.
Have any other questions, Mr. Casey?
It's always the same question, so Nancy has a lot of good ones.
Do you have a bias of left or ambulances, same people?
Um, so electric ambulances, um, I don't know if those exist, I was, we do have a, I will tell you, we have, and I can give you one of these, but our Director of Regulatory Compliance, Rod Dillon, is going around meeting with emergency managers in every county to set up trainings. All that would be expected of the emergency response is to block off the area. So we're not asking them to go in to any.
So I'm expendable, is what you're saying?
No, we, they would block off the area in time for Summit Carbon Solutions to, um, and resolve the issue.
Well, I'll be dead before you ever give up your main something here.
We, we're going to have people living here, working locally to maintain the lines. So it's not everybody in an A's. Once we get the lines frozen and we're starting construction, we will hire those people. And the emergency response will have trainings with those people, so they're going to know who they will be working with in the case of a breach. And they'll be living locally, I can't tell you exactly where, but they will be close.
You guys ground bottomed Dakota yet, where you going to dump it?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I was heard that it was yes, and I was heard that you guys don't even have permission to get there yet.
I don't, we don't have all the easements acquired.
Maybe you should be starting on the west going east, not east going west.
I'm not an engineer, I don't know. I'm not sure the rhyme or reason to that, but.
So when are you expecting a really flag U V?
Uh, we're hoping in June of twenty twenty-three.
And if they say no eminent domain and these people don't get through, it's just done?
I mean, we wouldn't be able to do anything at that point, so. But we're hoping to work with people to where we don't have to use eminent domain anyway.
Yeah, I heard you going around and checking the numbers up quite a bit, uh, get the people to sign.
We do want to work with people in any way that we can. More than just with money.
Now, if you quote, let's say you quote Nancy a hundred thousand, I'm just throwing a number. She says no, eminent domain takes effect. She still get her hundred thousand, are you going to drop that down to twenty-five because you're going through, she can't say no anymore?
There's a whole legal process, so eminent domain is not, and I'm, I am not a lawyer either. Your attorney could probably speak better on this, but I do know that eminent domain is not an easy, quick take thing. Once the I U V votes that we have the permit and we can use eminent domain, we can't just say, okay, that's it. There, it still has to go through a court and fair market value has to be decided. So it's a lengthy process and it's, and that's why we say we don't want, we really do not want to use eminent domain because it is a lengthy and costly process for us handling that.
So you go through board adjustments and then see how much your ground's worth.
It'll go through a couple of quick cases before it gets that far.
But you seem pretty confident that you're going to start June of twenty-three, but if it takes all this court dates and stuff, you think you really will start in twenty-three?
We want to start late summer of twenty twenty-three, so like August, we hope to get the I U V decision in June of twenty twenty-three. But yes, we we do hope to start construction in August.
I guess I, all my people, there's two there, there's one there, and I know who's signing and who's not going to sign. And if you're going to get your eminent domain decision in June and plan on going in August, these people are going to take it to court for a while, you're not going to get through that area. That's why I don't understand how you keep saying we're starting in August.
We hope to, that is our expected construction start date. Could it change? Absolutely, because we do want to work with people. But right now, that expected start date is August of twenty twenty-three and we hope to work with people up to that point. Um, and then what, if they move it to a later date, uh, which I don't think is impossible, I think that could happen. We would continue to work with the people through that date.
Cause you can't go through your federal ground, correct?
Um, I'm not sure to the answer of that, I don't work, um, we we work with counties specifically, I'm not sure about all the all the specifics on that, but if we do, I'm sure there's some kind of very lengthy part of the process.
That's why I'm getting a forty run through because the county and the feds are right to the south of me. So they know they can't go to federal ground, so they might get forty damage. And I don't know about county ground, Doug could probably speak on that because here in North where I was raised, we got all this county and federal ground. There's not much to get through there.
Any other questions? Dave, Eric, you got anything?
Well, I'd just like to say a couple of things, she mentioned the tax, it's an depreciated tax, so it goes away. Number two, she mentioned investors, John Deere, but we got a gentleman from Korea who's been convicted by the federal government several times, hundreds of millions for Russian, he owns ten percent. We got another gentleman on the board who does, um, has ties to Saudi Arabia, he's a lobbyist for Saudi Arabia. So there's, I tell you, people got to pay attention here to what's going on. There's a lot, there's five counties in South Dakota, boards have declared a moratorium on this project for a year on hazard, and I think our ordinance is we have to look at, we talk pipelines, but you're not talking about half of this lethal toxic pipeline, you're talking maybe a water line, natural gas. What are our ordinances for it, for a pipeline such as this? I mean, they're dangerous, there hasn't been a sit-down, they're lethal. That's all it is.
I find it interesting, um, carbon dioxide is only lethal if it were to take over the natural environment completely. We live with carbon dioxide all the time. Now, say if there was a rupture, um, tests have really shown that it dissipates within ten to thirteen seconds.
Where are you, where have you found this? Would you have this right across from your house? It's at your neighborhood. Under two years.
Well, we're staying five hundred feet away from everybody who would handle it. Carbon dioxide is is naturally, we have food grade.
Not compressed, not.
Not compressed like that, no, in all, it is compressed.
What is it, twenty-two hundred P S I, you pump it to that line?
That's the highest. It's thirteen.
It's thirteen hundred S I R.
Have you ever used a carbon dioxide fire extinguisher? Because once you use it, you're immediately to evacuate the area because it will.
Yes, that's basic safety, yeah.
Yeah, so carbon dioxide kills you.
When it takes over the environment completely. We're breathing carbon dioxide partially right now in small quantities.
I understand that.
Yeah. Uh, as, as far as, yeah, I think the greatest danger, there is a fact that it is compressed. It's compressive.
You know, more than two miles, the cloud will. They've done studies, the cloud will move more than two miles.
Okay.
We are doing.
It's a tight line along one hundredth Avenue, west of Algonia, and it ruptured at McGregor Road. That rupture, that cloud of carbon dioxide gas will blow down right into the city of Algonia. And a number of residents will die for being saved.
They're gonna have some that are sure of them.
Except the, well, shut off the valve, freeze open and they can't shut them off.
I'm sorry, hold on a second.
We've been told to shut up valves, freeze open and they can't shut them off. Because.
We, we have, now proven that we have every twenty miles at a maximum, we have uh safety valves. That, and they're monitored for pressure. If any pressure is uh uh shown to be dropping. The area where it's dropping, there'll be a valve on either side which will shut it off immediately.
And then it's open and can't shut off.
You know, we're.
Why is it silent?
You, you know, that's, that's one reason why we, you know, we have maintenance crews that go in and monitor.
With that blow?
I'm sorry?
With that blow? You got twenty two hundred pounds coming and all of a sudden hits a wall. That's gonna blow the line, ain't it?
It's called a mainline block valve and it's not like it goes snap. The valve takes a minute to close, but um.
But you've got, still got that bumps pumping behind it, twenty two hundred, thirteen hundred average pushing it. Something's gotta give.
It's, it's not gonna keep on building pressure beyond what it's designed for. I don't care how many pumps started.
I'm not sure of the science of it, but I do know that these are, are in use today, so um. It should work as.
We've actually been doing this since the late seventies.
I mean, in. Comparison to stuff around here, it'd be no different than if you raise your hydraulic cylinder on any piece of equipment. When it gets to the end, you'll build pressure, but it's designed to hold that pressure and it's.
Right, it'll be a relief valve if it reaches the pressure and that's it.
Yeah, but I seen the wrong valve on the end of the hose and I watched the hose explode too. Hey, Roger?
Okay, that's, I think. Probably had enough discussion on this today unless somebody had something that's really pertinent for. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. Thank you for presenting. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Kind of really been concerned you guys have, so.
Okay, thank you. Look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you.
Okay, so again, I think it was better.
Yeah, I understand.
No, it's good.
Thank you.
You bet.
Doug, do we want safe streets and roads?
Sure.
We do.
I hope everybody wants this chance.
It's amazing to get safe roads. They're low, some of them are pretty flush for right now.
We're up to you, Doug.
Yes, um. There's so many acronyms now and it's, it's difficult to sometimes discuss all of this, but. I I J A, that's the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act. That's the new transportation bill that was passed. Almost last year by the legislature assigned by President Biden. It's also called the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law. So those two terms get uh used interchangeably, just. Along with all the funds that these uh laws created as far as. Uh federal funds for bridge replacements, federal funds for maintenance of roads, federal funds of. Interstate construction, local road construction, state road construction. Uh, there are other funds that are available. Billions with a B of dollars that are available, but it's going to be through grants. Uh, having reviewed the bill, the Iowa County Engineers Association, we. Uh, put together a group of engineers to monitor uh these opportunities for funding. And uh the funding is, is a notice of opportunity of funding opportunity. Thank you. Notice of funding opportunity. That's what these notices are. Uh, recently, there was a notice for some safety funds, which is another acronym. Uh, S S. For a Safe Streets and Roads for All. Um, one of the prerequisites of getting some of these funds is that a county needs to have. An action plan and it needs to have a review of the road system and have an action plan available to them. Uh, two thousand fifteen or two thousand sixteen, Sioux County, we did. Uh, have a safety plan developed, an action plan developed, but it does not meet the criteria that this. Uh, notice of funding opportunity has, so. What we are doing, the Iowa County Engineers, we'd like every county to participate in this. If there are funds available, having that action plan available will be the first step. And then money may become available that we could use. Uh, there is no cost to Kassim County for this, eighty percent of it would be paid for by the federal government, the other twenty percent. The Iowa Department of Transportation Safety Bureau has committed that they will pay for that. Uh, since I put this on the agenda, the Iowa Department of Transportation Safety Bureau has come out and said. That they will pay for counties that have existing safety action plans. That they will pay to get those updated. So, having said that, the discussion is still going on as to how to get every county. To have one of these action plans. I'd still like the board supervisors to pass the resolution that I pres, I put into your electronic folder. Um, I hope everybody had an opportunity to read it. I will certainly read it now. It's a resolution for participating in S S four A grant application. And this is, uh, this was sent out to every county engineer. Uh, asking them to discuss this with their board supervisors and to uh. Try to uh hopefully get everybody on board with this. Uh, whereas as part of the new federal transportation bill, Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act. I I J A, there's over one billion dollars of roadway safety funding available in the form of safe streets. And roads for all. S S four A grants to be eligible applicant. To be an eligible applicant for this new safety funding, a county is required to have. An eligible action plan in place and whereas. The Iowa County Engineers Association plans to apply for a S S four A grant development supply. All ninety nine counties in Iowa with an eligible act, action plan, no cost to the counties. I C E A encourages all ninety nine counties to participate in this grant application. And whereas the Kassim County Board of Supervisors will commit to achieve significant. Declines in roadway fatalities and serious injuries in Kassim County. And whereas the Kassim County Board Supervisors recognizes the action plan. And will assist the county engineers department in achieving the goal of dramatic decrease in roadway fatalities. And serious injuries, zero roadway fatalities and serious injuries by the years twenty thirty and twenty fifty respectively. And whereas the Kassim County Board Supervisors, after consulting with the county engineer. Desires to participate in a joint S S four A grant to develop and receive an eligible act. Action plan for Kassim County, therefore being resolved by the board supervisors of Kassim County that this county. Does hereby request to be included in statewide S S four A grant for their action plans for all ninety nine counties in Iowa.
Any questions on the resolution?
So who writes the grants?
This will actually be written, I believe, by a company consultant out of Denver, Colorado. The name is Staple. Right now, Donnie, sorry, Gary.
Why does that just it open? It was you or some?
No, because we got a consultant.
Okay.
And again, the safety, the Iowa Department of Transportation Safety, Kimberly and Ford. That is the name of the uh of the grant writers.
Does this include that money that they designated for bridges? There's like two billions set aside.
Well. Part of the federal monies. That is going to the state, um, yes, a portion of that went to county bridge construction fund. Along, they, they, they divided that up to try to make everybody's uh. Everybody's. Uh, state, counties and cities, uh this all increase the same percentage.
Any other questions? This resolution number is seven twenty six twenty two oh one. But I have a motion to approve this resolution.
So.
Motion by Mr. Becker, do I have a second? Second, second by class. Any discussion on the resolution? Very none. Please do a roll call vote.
Becker?
Yeah.
Casey?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Class?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Motion carried in analyst.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep. Construction in right away?
No requests for construction in the right way.
Discussion with the engineering zoning administrator?
Um, we have Ryan, Ryan, you guys know tomorrow. Um, so we, yes, the day of the day are sweeping McGregor and sweeping intersections, trying to keep. Gravel off of the, off of the roads. Um. Roadside spraying is all completed by B and W. Tomorrow morning, uh, the bridge on the Big Six, Blacktop, right to the east of the Big Six elevator. They're going to be pouring that. Highway eighteen, I drove through highway eighteen Saturday. Everything's opened up now. However, I think that. Depending on the different construction, I think there probably be limiting traffic at different times to. A single lane with pile of cars, so I don't think that any detours will be needed anymore. Uh, down in Irvington, they got uh substructure piling in, they should be pouring Thursday. A part of the base for that to west pier. Like our wind power is continuing to um erect the generators up there, consuming wind energy. I think next week, um, they're gonna be excavating for some of their pudding, starting that type.
You guess they've got the lime gradeways in?
Yes.
About to block up, but put quite a few in there.
Did that work? Um, that is everything in a nutshell, I guess, speaking.
Any questions for Doug?
Blacktop and the idea when they're gonna start?
Um, we have a pre-construction conference set up. Uh, I think it's August ten, Wednesday, August ten. So it'd be shortly after that, and that does remind me. I think. That four-way bridge about August three. It's the estimate on that, but that's about it. They're thinking four weeks project for that.
On the four-way?
On that four-way bridge, yes.
It should be done for a farm or something. Hopefully.
Well, I have a blacktop now, but.
No, it'll be.
You're gonna have the turn lanes done into at the same time?
We're gonna make sure we, we will concentrate on ha, having the ability to get in traffic through there. And if we have to construct turn lanes, traffic. We'll, we'll do that, or just have to have some traffic control out there. Cause hopefully the people respect us a lot.
Um, Doug, I told you about the shouldering stuff here this last week?
Yes.
Uh, I did get a call from Jeff Dietering and he was. Questioning why we were asking permission from landowners to put rock by acreages. And I guess. I was gonna ask, is that the position the board's taken before that we ask permission to put rock by acreage or why is that being done? Because if we're shouldering the roads. I don't, don't know why we're skipping spots like that, I guess.
Well, we just. We try to work with. The adjacent landowners, even when we're doing uh resurfacing projects, there's times where they, they mow. And instead of putting rock out. We will put out some, could also seek to new rock up to. I mean, does Jeff want us to put something in front of his yard different?
No, he thought everything should be the same.
Okay, well, we, our road department doesn't, we don't do that, and I think there's other landowners that would probably. Tell you uh that I, I prefer to have a different material. So.
That's why, that's why I was asking what our position was, because you don't see that change along state roads. Doesn't. Doesn't seem like they would ask permission on that. There's, there's rock along the shoulder. And it's all consistent.
That, that will be the state's way of doing things. Uh, we, we try to work with landowners and if they're satisfied with. Aggregate, that's fine, but if there are some landowners that on a paved road, they have a pretty nice. Itch that is mowed before slope and they can, they'd like to continue to mow it. Be working with them.
So then, like you said, if there, if there is a drop off there, there will be dirt or some other material brought in to bring that up?
That's what we've done, yes.
Okay.
Anything else? If not. Stay for fifteen minute break before we start on drainage. Thanks, Doug.
Too long. I think you are too. You know?
Oh, yeah.
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 That's gonna take as long as I thought.
I think they're left. I think they're left a lot.
Just range. Yeah, that might take a little while, but.
Two or a plus or discussion and stuff. I don't think there's anything.
They're talking about showing how much people are gonna show up?
There's a pointing attorney for DDA thing that we got served this morning.
Andy said that was gonna be a closed session this week, uh, D four.
What's her D four?
I seen them.
Oh, well, this, this Johnson, Johnson family living in Revocable Trust, that closed session this morning, that is D four. That, I don't know if that's what she was talking about.
Just make reference, who's in that? Or D eighty would both be closed session this week.
I'm evidently not fading.
Yeah, Stacy Bash. Remember what we talked about in last night? Regarding. I don't know.
Said about the voting machines?
I have no idea.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what she.
Yeah, that, that was period. One part.
She's preventing the Patriot.
She kinda runs the Patriot meetings, yeah. Yeah, she organizes that. It's a good organizer, that's for sure.
Is that just to make people aware of government?
Patriot meetings are, yeah, it's kind of different every time I'll probably have been.
I haven't yet.
Okay, I've been to two. I had mixed feelings on them because, uh, and a lot of the people that show up to the Patriot meetings, they have some good stuff. I've been there. I mean, I'm not condemning their behavior, but.
Are they anti-government?
No, I mean, you guys, you have those people there, but, but.
That's the general purpose of the meeting.
Thank, the purpose of it is awareness of stuff that is going on in the government. Various topics, like they had Governor Michael Flynn on the phone last night, which was a pretty big deal. For forty-five minutes, he addressed the people there. They get a good turnout. There's just, I have such extreme people that are there. Not, not only leading it, but just the attendees, it really attracts a, an interesting crowd. So I, I don't know.
Is it focused on big government or just local?
They usually have a, they're usually like four speakers, um, regular speakers, and they have a special guest every time. And more regulars are something to do with. I have, it's right me and I, I know there's one on medical freedom, there's some on uh, child trafficking and that sort of, given trafficking. Uh, there's one on elections, and there's another one on, uh, there's one on biblical prophecy and going on in America. Which, that, that's honestly part of, part of bothers me. I don't know how religious you are, but I'm, I'm, I'm very involved in my faith in church and stuff, and I don't agree with that, but.
My, that's it.
It, it is, it is way off the deep end, like, I don't think the Bible is, I don't think.
There's a couple of the people that come here from that, and they were.
Probably come to these meetings. I know, I've seen that.
And they kind of indicate that, you know, they're here to watch government because it's corrupt. And so I didn't know if it was, and they, that's what the whole, we could act with.
Well, that's, that's what I mean by it, it kind of encourages those that.
A way to.
To go further with their feelings, yes. And I'm not saying that's always bad, but you just get the, get those kinds of people that maybe should encourage. If you're gonna phrase it that way. I don't know.
Extremes.
And usually I have city council meetings on me when the Patriot meetings go on, so I, that's my excuse, but I don't.
Geez, coming up with all the excuses.
I'm, oh, I tell you, they're supposed to have a city council meeting. Also have a city council meeting once a month.
You have a city council?
No, sometimes, sometimes I do. I mean, I don't, no, I don't, I haven't gone to that one, but I've gone to other city council meetings.
You know, a lot of city council meeting, you know, so, yeah, really talking about what's going on. That's.
Yeah, yeah. We should go to both. He's committed to.
I didn't even know that, but okay.
He's given you your time to go to both.
Yes. Oh, we pay big bucks to city council though, twenty-five dollars a month. Yeah.
Get rich.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I didn't know I was getting paid when I got on and.
You're on the council?
Yeah, I'm on city council. No.
How much you're on it?
No, Donald, I'm.
Oh, great.
Yeah. Yeah, I was being just, T P Patterson approached me, he said, hey, I'm getting off. And Calvin Neptune's getting off and. If you're being honest and being honest, well, I'm already running supervisor and don't know if that's even legal for me to serve two offices. So I, I, I checked the audit out, I went online, you know, read the very history, and it was legal, so I said, okay. I'll jump on it.
The meeting time still, you know, for sure.
No, it's, it's the first Monday of every month, in the evening, seven o'clock in the evening, so. And then every once in a while, well, the last few months, we've had some special meetings, just taking care of random things. Yeah.
Good deal.
But I don't, I kinda, I don't enjoy that. And it affects my backyard, so it's.
Yeah, absolutely. I thought you meant you were kind of the only one in the city.
No, no.
Eats, wouldn't pretend to be either, but.
No, I, I didn't care less, it's come out there. We've had a good council, all of us are.
How many members you have?
Five. And four of us are under thirty-five. One, and then Carol, that's Carol, and Donald, he, he's the, he's the old man.
Good to see you. Getting a ball.
Yeah. You know, that is a big, a big trenching. I don't know, but, but he's on yours. He's probably a little, little forty's. Yeah. It's a nice group. But yeah, and then one of our council members, Cody Holmes, fortunately counting, um, broke apart from people. He is also on school board, so I guess he didn't, if he didn't serve me two months. And then they're about to lose one of their county guys in Laverne, that we just hired him to the same. They don't, they don't.
Yeah.
He just accepted you.
Good.
Yeah.
There you go. Now you just need to join in the school board meeting.
Well, I'm all three, yeah, that's what I mean. No, no, I'm not even gonna be in a school district anymore. Well, I mean, I will be, but it's not a school district, I care about. After next year.
Well, they should have that one, I think, their big shift.
Yeah, we have one more year, and then it'll be, but eighty-seven percent goes to Alphona and thirteen percent goes to West End. But there are some kids who are gonna go to Alphona too. The same distance. I don't know, yeah, my kids won't, won't ever go to Alphona.
They'll open their own class, make it learn.
I know, like, that's, that's our problem. Is there's five, six kids cross the road from school, out of the kids' school, like seventy-five kids in town. We have thirty-four kids in school between three towns. So. And you know, it's, how do you keep school?
Right. They've had a good run though.
They did. I, I'm shocked that they're still up, really.
They've been becoming a challenge with that. It's hard.
Well, it's a little bit different than, like in Corworth, having a high school, a middle school. All of your community life kind of revolves around school, whereas in Laverne, like I say, there's thirty-four kids that go to the elementary between three towns. Yes, there are families in town involved in school, but they do two concerts a year.
Right.
You know, and that's it for community involvement. So it's, it's not like the town is relying on the school to keep going kind of thing anymore. But they've already gone through that many years ago, so. The, like, the biggest thing is what, what happens to the school building? And how we keep out certain things. Because you can't live within thousand feet of school, you're an offender, et cetera. You don't have a school that, you know, hard.
Right. Well, there's different models of that too.
There is, there is.
Allowed with.
And really, we, we did, but even with the school, there was an offender a block away.
And that also implies that they care stupidly.
Impasts, I, I think so, yeah. Yep, yep.
Used to be.
But that's our superintendent at Laverne. Uh. Did not wanna do anything about the offender living a block away because, as the offender's daughter came to school there.
Oh.
And so we let, we leave the offender even though he's, and, yeah. The teachers were not happy with superintendent. He, he doesn't have a degree to that. Reputation amongst teachers. Uh, and he drives all the way from Jefferson every day.
The superintendent?
Yeah.
Saying a few times.
Oh, do you know John?
Just interacting with, sure, I worked for a moment, I've been a few times, it's P D days or.
Very.
We like that one, that may be the best.
Okay. Uh, most teachers in Laverne are pretty people, very Republican people, and John is very, very nice. And so it's, I think they clash a little bit that way too.
Wow.
I don't know, but yeah, we got one year left, so then I guess it'll be my problem, council problem to figure out where to do the building.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't want to put apartments, I know.
That's the nice frigging.
Yeah. I would love, and like, like Sidmore did, I would love for us to take down the school and leave the gym and have, cause our community center downtown old is so bad in there, especially in the basement, and it's, I mean, they keep it painted, so you don't look bad, so, but it's just not a nice building. And it would be nice to, the gym is still in decent shape. It'd be nice to have that gym's community center for events. I, and that would be what I would be for, and maybe even like Leder did. Leder's got a rec center, uh, up there and it's a number of towns that have type of, of their gym. And.
How is that for school at least?
I know, I know. Uh, so I mean, you know, you pay your fee for the year and you can have a, have a weight room and exercise machines and that kind of stuff. But I'd be for that, and then it's going.
Right, so they didn't use some kind of it and.
It's the rec centers, yeah.
And now I'm part of our students, kids are funded.
You're a rec center, which one?
The, the community center, yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah.
People using kind of it in preparation.
Yeah. They're pretty by basement.
I'll be stunned if you sign it, they think of it as a great place for.
Yeah, yeah.
People can find a key and go and walk to them.
Yeah. That's what I was like, that's what I'd like to do with it. It's just how much it would maintain, and at least that roof is covered. So it's water runs out, but it's not like it's the old flapper building.
We have something, so you want to. It hurts.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this one's District eighty, this one's good.
Maybe have the ceiling spray foam insulated up.
Yeah.
I did that to my job.
Just you have.
Good luck with it. No. Hopefully. They want, they want five or six kids.
Five or six.
Six, I like how they count.
It is the big.
It is the big.
Yeah.
My wife comes from family, they, so, they're eight kids.
Go for a dozen while you're at it.
Why not? You know, there's, I'm the only dad, I'm the only dad in Sioux County. Well, really any county around here, I, I am the only dad. So, thirty-eight, I need to have like a dozen boys. All of them, marry local girls, stick around.
Name recognition is gonna be hard when you're the only one. They can't mistake you for anyone.
I know, I know, yeah. Need, need some boys.
If you will.
Yeah. So we're coming up on our second wedding anniversary. Born two.
Yeah. Those things who did every time you turned on our screen.
Every time the power's on, yeah. If it, if it was left on, or like if it was plugged in and just unplugged, you're gonna, that doesn't. If you, every time you plug it in, it's sad, yeah.
From those enough of it, where now we can, now it's, it's all black and it's gonna fall on top. Actually, the whole is, it's good scene.
Yeah.
Oh, but yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
There you go.
Look at you getting rich.
I know.
Twenty-five dollars for council meetings or the.
I know, it's not really opening up in the. Yeah. Pay off the car, it'd be good.
With a few piano albums and fix, you fix them too or just two of them?
Yeah, I fix them too.
You fix any other instruments?
I have a shop, but, but, um, you know, I can re-straight my guitar. But otherwise, there's something wrong that I'll take them to the store.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I'm all right.
Are you?
Good to follow you.
Not too bad.
Beautiful, eh?
It is, nice and cool.
And he broke out the papers, and I got them too, but he must've been missing the signature page or something.
Oh, I have no idea. Yeah, you're a joke, joke, you're a joker. You. Good, how are you doing?
I think I just got a really smart scam email, a lady says that she has a free Steinway grand piano to give away.
A free what?
Grand piano. I don't know about that. Got pictures and look like they're off the website.
They're going after you, very specifically.
I know, that's, that's, that's more detailed than you. Softballs, softball over for grandkids?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, they got beat to a couple weeks ago. Basketball. Basketball, club basketball right now.
Grammy.
And then they had? Then they had a bunch of teams down in the Sioux Falls Waverly area. Last week, they, JV and varsity played down there. And they, both teams started, both JV and varsity went undefeated.
Okay.
They beat every, I think they won every game down there. Fortunately done for them all month. Miami still basketball, she was in Sioux City this weekend playing basketball.
Is the radio, I thought you said bad, baseball, softball's finally done.
Yeah, softball is, now it's, uh, volleyball, so it's up. Basketball can't train, basketball, doggy dog.
Do they have the guys too? Cause I heard my daughter showed it, I heard on the radio, this is, uh? No coaches could talk to any girl athletes week? My daughter said Walt's can't even talk to her this week. Well, do they have that for guys too, or just?
No, it's everything, I think.
It's everything, I think. What does it try to talk to me to go out for the sport or what?
Oh, I think it's to do with just, uh?
They have nothing to do.
Like coaching, coaching them and stuff.
Type your family.
There's ways around, but still they still, they can, they get together, they go to the gym and they? If somebody else hopes they're working at them. Okay.
Signals for you. Used to see them all the time.
Soybeans are up thirty five cents, corn's up fifteen.
Yeah, let's go out.
We need that. It's gonna back where they were.
The other day they went down ten cents, but they only took, they widened the bases.
We have some requests today.
Yes, you do, um. And requests, this is the?
Yep, Laura had, you can sign it, yep.
Yep.
Uh, I don't know if, you know, who call up, they always, uh, end of July, you may sell you out or you guys start getting storage. They're going until the end of October this year.
Really?
So I hope they're hurting for corn. There's supposed to be a lot of it on farm, yeah. Soon as it's January, all over the, into the elevator, since they have free stores, I can exactly, I don't have to babysit it. Get it in.
Advisors, my capacity is just, so we do this one.
Okay.
March has the drains, sister.
March got the drains?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, anyone, please, I'll stick with that, they're higher than turning. Go back into session and take care of drainage. We have some repair requests, Marge. Thank you. You have a drainage request, Mr. Stecker?
Yep, a couple here. For thirty eight is Kever in section thirty six, a couple large holes. Aaron Schwartz. And number forty was in Ramsey twelve. Julie Johnson, uh, property, Derek Blair, he fixed it.
I got two requests, one is from Lee Banking as far as Eric Idy. Representation for grain seven. What's your feeling? My feeling is that? We can write him a letter. Asking him if he takes any responsibility. We'll send it along with it. Or do you wanna wait? And we're going to have to hire an attorney for grain eighty. Do we give him that at the same time and say, take care of it?
Just so you know, that is scheduled to be on the agenda.
Let's wait until August nine.
The request? Okay.
We'll wait till August nine to make a decision. The other one is the number forty one, Brad Culberson. Uh, two large holes broken tile needs repaired in the past year, I wrote Thompson on there. So thank you, Marge, do I have a motion for the supervisors to take care of their grain request? Little motion by law, second by Plath. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Uh, we have to reschedule DD eighty two cleanup project, Marge, and what happened, I couldn't make it.
That we didn't return.
Okay, so when did he wanna do it?
Sixteen, that next.
August sixteenth? Uh, you got it, nine to nine.
Let's say ten.
Ten?
Ten maybe, but let's schedule for the night, yeah.
I would make a motion to reschedule DD eighty two per ten o'clock on, uh, sixteenth of August, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Casey, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Pay pay app? For DD eighty two? Mostly, uh, drain, surface drains. Is there any questions on the pay app for DD eighty two? Six thousand four seventy four dollars and thirty nine cents. I've seen if they had anything on there for brewing, the steel, steel bin that ended up in the vine of the dredged ditch.
It's very junk pile.
Yeah, that's probably what it is.
For twenty seven dollars.
I would move to approve pay app number four for DD eighty two. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by law, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Abby. Decision, discussion to approve pay app number one for DD four twenty eight lateral repair project. Are you got any information on it?
They have the. Ninety eight pounds, it's under three.
Alan didn't give you any detailed reporting what you're doing yet, or did he?
This is, it's generated by Bolton and May.
Okay.
What, what detailed reporting are you?
I was just wondering what they were doing.
About thirty six inch concrete pipe.
Yep.
I had to make motion to approve.
Mr. Stecker makes an motion to approve the pay app number one for DD four lateral twenty eight repair project. Do I have a second? Second at Mr. Plath. Any discussion on the pay app? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. She carried. Discussion decision, attorney for case, E U C B O two seven seven O nine for DD eighty.
Jim says Hudson has a recommendation.
It's, I put it here.
Maybe they'll take that as well.
This guy?
Yeah.
I'd never heard of him, some reason I would say, I've seen before. Give him the.
The ones we had.
Any discussion on this?
I do. We?
Uh, Robert, Robert?
Goodman?
Good, good man.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Plath makes a motion to retain? Albert Goodman?
Goodwin.
Goodwin?
Okay.
As our legal counsel for DD eighty. Uh? You wanna have Jim Hudson there as a reference for him? Sure, yeah, let's include Jim Hudson in the motion. I'll second that motion. Need to, discussion on the motion.
Just based on Joe's comments earlier, I don't, I don't know if there's something that separates me for the rest of the board, but? Obviously, we haven't had time to read through this, so? I don't know what's in there, I mean.
No. Your attorney. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I'm going to abstain. Just? Because I don't, I don't know.
Do we know that that you abstain from the motion? Put it in the record that Mr. Stecker abstained. Anything else on DD eighty, or?
I think for you. They're turning it. They didn't let us see. So.
I, I would.
Well, ask the attorney how that affects you then, whether you're gonna be, whether you, if we have a closed session, if you'd be involved in it or have to be, I don't know. You have to have the attorney give us an explanation how it.
Well, it's just cause I haven't read through any of this, I'm not gonna make the decisions.
None of us have.
Based on that, well, yeah, but I know.
But at some point, we need somebody to represent us, Kyle, and so? It'd be nice of you to prove that the attorney to represent us for the case. Stay, if we all abstained, we would have nothing.
Well, we'll just have to make sure the attorney knows that he abstained and see if that affects.
He's, oh, yeah, that's handled. He's coming against us. Or you're not.
Well, I, I have it too, so I, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah. It's, oh, it's.
I just didn't know, he didn't have a paper earlier to sign like we had to get that.
We just make sure.
Just forget it.
I mean? You wanna have it on the agenda next week or when I read through it, I'd be in a different position by then.
Yeah, we'll talk.
We'll talk about it and?
I'm, I'm not opposed to the attorney, I just?
Okay.
Not making a decision like that.
You're not opposed to the attorney at all?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't have any issues with Hudson or Goodman, that's, that's not the point.
Okay, discussion with the county auditor.
So Maxi Glatter is gonna be here, so, um, Danny doesn't have to share them on, so, they have any? I, we both plan to be in next, so you have a?
Are we doing full meeting or just claims?
We're just, it's just gonna be a short meeting, I think there's a couple things on it, and it has to be very. But you guys are both can be here, Roger's can be here. I think, um? I think that's, that's all that I. I've seen.
Yeah, and that's where like, Donnie goes to here for that. I don't know, we still all got served, so I don't know.
Mr. Stecker, do you have any? Any reports?
Yeah, we had our meeting at Eldora, um? Friday for Central, I have the detention center.
It's Marge.
Pass down this picture, there's? Photos of what the, um, expansion projects looking like.
Just the hallway?
Yeah, that's important.
I tell you, it's all windows. See, look at the hallway.
The design of the film, I mean, there's.
You don't get that though, you don't get much screen or you're just looking at another wall.
There's a control room in the center that's looking out towards, uh? Different rooms and areas and stuff, so it's? It's all tied together, it's just a couple visuals there for you. One of the big things we talked about was detention reimbursement at state level.
Yeah.
We specifically paid it for about seven hundred and forty thousand, and last year that was actually low, we got over eight hundred thousand last year. This year we got four hundred and forty thousand. Which directly goes back into our overall budget and affects what counties have to pay. But? That's set up from a specific fund that? Contributes to those expenses. So there's talk of trying to go down to the state legislature and see if we can get that back built. Over what we were expecting for all the centers. In general, budget and all that stuff's looking good, if anyone has any questions, as we pursue? Year to date, for last fiscal year, we had? About eighteen thousand, we budgeted about ten. It's pretty hard to budget for, just because you don't know? What's gonna happen, eventually there, all that sort of stuff, it's pretty much impossible. There was some that were actually four hundred percent over budget, smaller, so.
We've never?
I mean.
Never come close ever.
It's, it's kind of shot in the dark, but overall, nothing's gone good.
Mr. Casey?
Hey, wellness, I was, uh, Wednesday. And we were wanting to know about the table, cause there used to be one here, and then the person that owned it died or quit, and we took it with him. So we had Donna, she's gonna look up a little, let's see if she'd give us what the price was, if they get county a break, this is, and it was like a thousand eighty two, something like that for the table. And then they got the email the other day that they were looking at one out to Bob Nurse, and for the tammy, they fixed it up. So? They were talking, they didn't know if they'd ask? Put concrete pad down also? Or one talk, they were saying they're throwing around at the meeting, uh, putting a gazebo over it. It's like.
I get way too fancy, yeah.
Well, to me, if there's a gazebo out there and the customer or people that go here, you go and break, there's going to be customers in there, because it's public ground. It's not really, but they want to go outside, but it's nice out and get out, so. And I got a decaf. Uh, phone only meeting tomorrow over some mini grants. But I don't have to grab a desk or go down tomorrow. That's all that I had people call about the pipeline. Had people talk to me about the wind towers down there, so they're, they're here, you can't do nothing, they're here.
Mr. Lawson? I had a nine one one service board meeting. Um, I talked about nine one one from Iowa, Minnesota, when like if you have a Minnesota phone. They're having problems getting it transferred over to our law enforcement center, and so they're working on that. Um, they're still working on the house numbers, they got a quote from Iowa prison industries for house number signs, um.
Bring the towns?
Yeah, bring the towns. And most every town has an ordinance requiring them, so like the city of Algonia, they're going to have their reserves go out and talk to people that don't have numbers. And if they don't get them, possibly write an infraction, they're not having house numbers on. The only towns that don't have an ordinance is Titan and Sway City.
They don't get nine one one numbers, okay?
That's what everyone's talking about, there's some.
They don't have any numbers on houses.
Numbers on houses, so the ambulances and are having a hard time locating houses.
You're going to take those, well, I guess I'm, I guess I'm used to hearing, because we get the blue ones.
Right, so.
I'm on the court career.
So we're Titan, Sway City there to.
They were. It's going to be an E O C training sometime in August, possibly August ninth. In September twenty sixth and twenty seventh, there's going to be a mass casualty class from eight to four thirty both days. And then they talked about the new nine eight eight number. For, you know, it used to be the National Suicide Defense Lifeline, now it's Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. Trying to decide if we should put some money towards promoting it, put in the paper, and I told them I was going to talk to. Pair of connections and see if what they were going to do, if they were going to put any money to advertise, make sure that it gets out that it's ninety eight now instead of the. One eight hundred number. Um, and then the city of Algonia. They have asked to bring me to bring up, yeah. They have four hair racks of. Christmas decorations, they'd like to store a new old pro building in the brick part until they're finding a building to rent. Or build a building. And they'd be willing to sign a twenty eighty agreement, I said, well, let's discuss it in the board first, so we can take advice, put it on the agenda.
Where we put your stuff now?
I don't know.
I put it on the agenda. We'll discuss it, I'm.
Are they offering renting space or just want to use it?
I think they're just wanting to use it, but that's up to us, I guess, if what we decide.
Well, I expect to see if all that other stuff is out of there yet.
They can rip them back, so I think. Okay, what direction?
So I guess we can discuss it further, I'll put it on the agenda then, and maybe I'll take it for somebody here.
Yeah, I'm left, Chris.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I got two, two for them, I think.
I can't remember anything I did last week either, terrible. Anything else? Seen nothing for the good at Pursuit County. We declared a meeting adjourned at ten eighteen.
Make a vacation.
Hey, that's on vacation. I was planning on vacation, we got changed.
See, see if Carol gets to go. Is she?
Yeah.
Well, because of the. Steps, step relatives.
What she do to the trees?
She's got the green ribbon.
They, she had.
Oh, she did?
Seven, I just want a job.
How long is that for? You got to pay that every year?
I think so, yeah.
Well, for two years, she got.
Three years. Do it again.
She would be back down there. But it's the ISA letter from the legislature to state.
Big trees are hard to come by.
She had one.
Save it.
Well, see, I got that once, like, that's all we all needed. But they're dying from the bottom up the way it looks, but I thought that was actually the guy from the top down.
It's, it's close, I think it's supposed to still.
You just call them, come on, look at it.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a couple of them, I don't mind losing, but a couple.
She didn't want to lose, but then, yeah, there's still great big branches out.
Sometimes mine are doing.
She's got another big one broke off right now.
And so they checked and the one last forehead's not.
He does not think that they're, he doesn't suspect that they're, they thought they aren't, it isn't Pursuit County.
Right.
It's west of there, I don't get this.
Thank you, yeah, I will call in.
Good. We might call you, though.
You can call me on you. No, I answer.
So she just decided to say it's not an answer, right?
Right.
She'd say damn tree, if it isn't the county.
Okay, yeah.
You want to say for sure that, you know, that they were, ours been affected?
Yeah.
They're supposed to say. They did, we had to show the trees and he cut down. That's why I'm, we trees have to cut down. This is, that's a basic.